Does anyone remember when we used to deliver mayday baskets? I was going to do that this morning, but I didn't think anyone would connect. So, we'll open this meeting with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Mayor DeVere?
Here.
And Councilmembers Borton and Cavanagh are absent.
Thank you. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Larry Woodard with Ten Mile Christian Church. Larry is a repeat, and we always love to see you, Larry. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
It's a pleasure to be here. Before we begin our city business tonight, it's altogether fitting that we pause and thank our dear Heavenly Father for all the blessings that we have in this city. You've given wisdom to this council, its mayor, and the many city employees who helped make this city one of the best in the United States. Our dear Heavenly Father, we read regularly of the many challenges facing some of our nearby smaller cities who are struggling with growth, but we should not forget that just a few short years ago, Meridian was such a small city, growing in just over 25 years from 10,000 to over 100,000. Continue to give this council the wisdom to maintain and accommodate growth that is seemingly not ending. Tonight, I want to single out our police department for a special blessing as they face, along with other cities across our nation, this scourge of opioids. Protect our cities from this epidemic, which is affecting too many families and our police, who are trying to rein it in. Tonight, we also want to thank and recognize the many city employees who carry out the decisions made by this council. Some may be young, and this may be their first job, but may they sense the responsibility that is given them to implement tonight's decisions. Thank you, God, for blessing this city. Thank you for our schools, churches, businesses, homes, city employees, and ACHD, which works to fix our streets. I say all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Larry. Justin, I think you need to take that back to Director Wong, that he even remembered ACHD. That was awesome. Thank you. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Did I hear all ayes? Okay. I guess so. It was like, what is missing? Item five? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have one sign up, Brad Smith, who indicated the Ada County Assessor presentation.
You're...
I'm just here attending with Bob McQuade. He's going to be doing the presentation. I thought that was just a public signing in.
Thank you. No confusion, no problems. Thank you. Okay, item six is a proclamation. I'm going to move down to the podium. So, I have the privilege to read a proclamation declaring it Better Hearing Month. My dad has a hearing disability that continues to get worse over time, and I know how isolating that can be. And so, this is to really recognize those that are going through similar occurrences and how it can disadvantage them. So, bringing awareness to it is always a good thing. Whereas, hearing loss is the third most common health problem in the United States, and more than half of the people with hearing loss are younger than age 65. And whereas, hearing care professionals offer quality education and healthcare services to its citizens, which improves the quality of life for people of all ages. And whereas, the city of Meridian, Idaho recognizes and values the efforts of all who work to eliminate or minimize the isolating effects of communication disorders in the one in five families affected by them. And whereas, our citizens who have overcome communication disabilities through the services of hearing care professionals are now able to lead independent, productive, and more fulfilling lives. And whereas, hearing healthcare professionals observe and celebrate Better Hearing Month each year during the month of May, therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, hereby proclaim May 2018 as Better Hearing Month in the city of Meridian. And I ask and encourage all residents to applaud the achievements of hearing care professionals in improving the quality of life for people with communication disorders. And I'm going to hand this off to Susan and ask if she has any comments that she'd like to share. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say that at Treasure Valley Hearing and Balance this year, in honor of this proclamation, we are offering free screenings for everybody in the public. So, if you think you have an issue, or even if you think you don't, because we do recommend that you manage your ear care, just like you do your eyes, come in and see us and make sure that your hearing is up to snuff. And if it isn't, then we have some answers for you. We'll be glad to talk to you about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, item seven is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
All ayes, much carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into item 9A, which is our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council update. Colin and Ben, welcome.
Okay, so, last Monday, we had our MIAC elections.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Colin Fries, and this is Ben Hutchins.
Thank you.
So, last week, we had MIAC elections. And before I announce, like, everyone who got each position, I want to introduce your new vice chair that'll be speaking to you this upcoming year for MIAC. And so, yeah.
Hi, my name is Ben Hutchins. I was elected to be vice chair this upcoming year for MIAC. Last year, I was the at-large ambassador for all small schools in the Meridian area and a little bit outside for North Star as well. I'm super excited for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to this year ahead.
Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, so, when we had our elections, we had a guest speaker named Shelley G., and she gave an amazing speech, was really passionate about what she had to say, standing out in Who You Are. And so, Ben and I were thinking about sharing some notes that we had from her speaking, so.
Well, what she talked about was really just being a good speaker, a good role model for those around you, and taking your experiences in your life, being able to reflect on them and show other people around you what a person really should be looking like around in schools and the community, really.
Yeah, and she really touched up on just, you know, with the past and the experiences that you have and bringing out that character in yourself. And so, we had an amazing time. I know a lot of people were touched by that, especially before we went into our elections.
Thank you for sharing that.
So, the chair this year, I'm going to go down a huge list, by the way, of people who've got elected in. But the chair is, I don't know if you guys have met Logan, but he is now the chair of MIAC.
And actually, Logan was the one that was behind the participatory budgeting project of last year
Yes.
that we'll be celebrating this week.
Yep. And then, obviously, we have Ben as the vice chair. And then, we have a new secretary, Robin. We have Jared Gonzalez is the communications coordinator. Abby Hutchins is the social coordinator. Britton Davis is the government affairs chair. Amber Graves is the government affairs vice chair. Shayna Thomas, teen activities committee chair. Oh, goodness.
Jaylana.
Jaylana, that's right, that's right. Jaylana, she is the new teen activities vice chair. Sidney Fisher, community service chair. Chloe Robbins, Renaissance ambassador. Connor Burbank, Rocky Mountain ambassador. Warren Johnson, Mountain View ambassador. Courtney McBride, Meridian ambassador. And Jacob Francis, at-large ambassador. Jackson Jones is also going to be the co-at-large ambassador. And he, just so heads up, he was a middle schooler last year, and he was still coming to MIAC meetings and stuff like that. Like, he was that engaged in MIAC itself before he could even technically be allowed to be in MIAC. And then, yeah, the last thing we have is the, again, the Point of Hope Run that I brought to you guys last time. It's this Saturday, and we have so many people volunteering. I know all the schools in the West Ada School District plan, high schools, plan on being there to represent each school in this run. And so, and we also saw that a lot of you signed up for the run, which I'm really excited that you guys signed up, and thank you for doing that. And yeah.
So, what time does it kick off officially?
So, 9:45 early registration. 10 o'clock, the event starts. At 10:30, Matt McCarter will be speaking, and then at 11:15, the race will start.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments, or?
Any questions? Well, thank you for introducing us to next year's leadership. What is the, do you have a closing out celebration?
Yeah, we're actually planning that, and so, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we're planning, last meeting we talked about, we went to the Village Coffee Shop on Monday, and we talked about our upcoming end-of-year party. We're thinking about doing it at a park and just having hot dogs and just having a really good time. Everybody who was in MIAC last year, just having a blast. Yeah.
Good deal. Well, you have a lot to celebrate. It's been a productive year. You've had some major milestones, and so, I'd like to congratulate you. And certainly, Ben, we'll see you back next year. But Colin, I know you'll still be around. We do hope to see you on occasion as well, and wish you luck as you graduate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9B is our annual assessment briefing by our Ada County Assessor, Mr. McQuade.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, it's nice to be back. It was exactly a year ago, almost, because it was May 2 of last year that I came and gave you a presentation. This is my first one for this year. I'll do about, I think, 13 or so before all is finished. And I've brought Brad Smith with me. He's my new chief deputy, and he's going to do a couple of these for me this year to take some of the pressure off. I just wanted to go out and tell you that we're sending out 42,000 assessment notices. We're looking at about the 26th of May. That would be to the citizens, the property owners here in Meridian. These numbers aren't final, and I give you that caveat every year, but I will tell you this. The numbers I'm going to give you are pretty close to what it was. We just did an analysis of the error rate. These numbers will be about 1%, maybe about 1% low of what the final numbers will end up being. So, they're certainly robust enough for people to do some type of work with them. Before I get started, I'd mention that it's really an interesting year that we're looking at. And before I get into that, I just want to just highlight a couple of things. So, you'll, when I say some things that are really interesting, you might not just be totally incredulous. You think, well, this makes sense. The, first of all, we assess property, all existing properties, is, we look at all of the sales. Well, we have about 10,000 or 11,000 sales in Ada County. And we compare those sales prices to our assessed values for the previous year. These are sales from 2017. We'll compare those sales to our 2017 assessed value. And we'll say if my property was assessed at 400,000, which it's not, but if it were 400,000, and it sold for $450,000, we will take a look at that and say, well, this property needs to be adjusted up. But we'll do that with the whole population. So, it's trending is the primary method of determining our values. That's the market approach. It's really critical.
Mr. McQuade, I guess I have a question, or maybe it's more of a statement.
Yeah.
That sounds scary to me, because right now, we have, what I just heard today, a housing inventory of 1.4 months. That's our inventory.
Here in Meridian?
And so, yes. And so, when a house is sold, it's not going at even appraised value. They're giving cash over and above that value. So, those sales value are going to inflate, I think artificially, the real value of homes. So, hopefully, we're not assessing them up because of those, that bidding war that's going on on houses.
Well, Madam Mayor, this, the way we do this, this is prescribed by the International Association of Assessing Officers. There's a professional association, and by statute and by rule and regulation, we have to follow those rules. And it does make sense, because that's what they're selling for. But I agree with you. It is scary what's going on out there, and I'll just kind of wrap up a little bit. MLS, in March, I believe it was, 24 days of supply. They say six months is a typical market. 24 days, less than a month of supply.
Yeah.
And that's why the market has just gone crazy again. But anyway, I'll just keep going unless you want to discuss this more.
No, I'm just getting a little freaked out about what numbers you're going to give us.
And it's, I'll tell you, the Tax Commission does a ratio study on the quality of our work, and we have to be at 100%, plus or minus 10%. And it's what they do, is they'll take these sales, and they will adjust those sales. And our assessed value needs to be very close to those sales prices. If not, they can order a reappraisal, and that is not pretty at all. There was a county up in North Idaho, I believe it was Boundary, or Bonner, yeah, Boundary County. The assessor had increased the values, I can't remember what it was, 15, 20%, pick your number, whatever it was. And to put them into compliance, the commissioners rolled those values back, all of them back, at the Board of Equalization. That made them out of compliance. The Tax Commission ordered a reappraisal, and when they do that, it's not going to be, oh, Bob, you live here on the north end, your value's going to go up 6%, and those of you, Vista, yours is 2%. They will come in with a blanket, and they'll say, all single-family residential will go up 10% or whatever the number is. And there was no appeal. That's why the consequences of being out of compliance are really important. And that's why we work so hard to make sure that our values are right. Our values for 2017, we were at 97%. In 2016, we're at 97%. So, we're a little bit less than that 100% that we're supposed to be at. But again, it needs to be 100%, plus or minus 10%. And as we go through, perhaps there'll be a level of comfort to you. If not, we can talk about it some more. With all having been said, total market value in Meridian is $12 billion, and that's up 10%. Over last year, it was $10.9 billion. That's the total market value. That's not what you're going to tax. It wouldn't be what I'd call a potential taxable value. To get to the potential taxable value, we have to take out the homeless exemption. That's $2.5 billion. That's up a little bit over last year. And I just will add this one note. The homeless exemption in 2016 was frozen at $100,000. So, even though our values are going up now, the homeless exemption is not going to go up. It's just going to stay there. And so, it would just become worth less and less and less. And when we look at what's going on this year, I think we're all going to say, boy, you know, if something needs to be done about it, and when I say this year, I'm talking about 2018, what will we be talking about next year? And take out outstanding exemptions. This, remember, is interesting. Last year, when I was here, I said we had, we took out $254 million of exemptions. This year, only $39 million is an adjustment, because the commissioners have almost all of the exemptions done. They've been working really hard. And so, that's just kind of a wild card, and we just put last year's value as a proxy. But we know that's $39 million outstanding, so this is going to make this number even much better. Plus, operating property, that's what the state tax commission assesses. This is going to be utility properties, such as road tracks for Union Pacific, gas lines, transmission lines, that's all operating property. The state tax commission assesses that, and those values really aren't available until August. So, we don't know. But again, we'll just use last year's value as a proxy, and that's going to be reasonably close. So, I think the bottom line number in this is the potential taxable value, and it's $9.5 billion. That's the 13% increase. Over last year, it was $8.4 billion. On, just breaking things down a little bit, residential, your parcel count is 38,600. That's up 4% over the year before. And now, we're going to go into market value, not taxable value, but market value, single-family residential. And this is where it gets really interesting to me. It's $9.1 billion. It's an increase of 16% over last year, 17.8. And I want to just talk about the median increase that we're looking at in Meridian for this year as of January 1 is 10.3% is the median increase. And I mentioned January 1 because it's a static date, and we would expect our value, we would expect a home to sell for our value. We have very close to that if it were sold on January 1. But as the market, it's a very dynamic market, and as the fastest moving, the larger the departures we go through, you know, to May and August and October, we could be way off. And when the market is increasing 10%, we would be 10% under a sale that occurred in October. And this is some reason why people think that we're either over-assessing or under-assessing, because they're looking at a sale that happened much later in the year. But a 10.3% median increase, I had to have a visit with my staff on this today, because MLS, their percent increase was 8.5%. And I really wanted to figure out, why is that? Because I've always used that as a benchmark. Well, over the years, I've watched the MLS data, I've always wondered, do I use the median value of 2016 to the median value of 2017? And look at that change and say, okay, this is the percent change for 2000, at the end of 17, and for January of 18? Or, the other method, which I've always pondered, which is better, do I look at what MLS listed a house, the median sales price in January of 2016, and compare that to January of 2018, or be 2017, and then 2018? Because we're just looking at one-month sales, and that, I really do believe, is a better sign. And if you look at that number at MLS, it's not 8.5%. 8.5% is the median value of 2016 to our median value of 2017. January 17 sale to January 18 sale is over 15% increase. So, when we're looking at a 10.5% or 10.3% increase, I think, okay, I'm more comfortable with that now. And perhaps that probably really is the better measure. Median value on single-family residential is 250,000. MLS, January this year was about, I think it was 256,000. So, we're a little bit less than their median, but we're closer to it. So, that 250,000 median increase. You can't get anything in Ada County for less than 200,000 unless, as the staff said, that it's a condo or it's a piece of property that is in very, very poor condition. There's nothing out there for less than 200,000. And we mentioned a minute ago, in Ada County, this was at March, 24 days on the market. That's why you see people, someone wants to buy a house, or they put a house on the market for, say, $250,000, and someone will come right in and say, I'll give you $260,000, and another person says, I'm going to give $265,000. So, that's what's going on. Interest rates have increased this year. You would expect that to dampen the market somewhat, but it really hasn't. All that dampened were refinancing. That stopped. But the market is still going crazy out there. Land value increase is certainly a large contributing factor, and there's this saying, as to understand house prices, you need to understand land values. Land value this year, about 15% increase. When I was here last year, land values had gone up 6%. So, land values have percent changed. The rate of changing has more than doubled since last year. That's land value. And we have a, what is called a symposium in January, where we have developers, lenders, people from Delta Company Community and talk to us. And the message we heard is that they are really husbanding their land that they hold very carefully. They don't want to get caught like they did in 2007 and 2008 with these large inventories. When we had that recession, the larger, better-managed companies, they were in the position to go out and start picking up a lot of these lots that, and at one time, we're selling for $500,000, or $50,000. They're now going for maybe $20,000, $25,000. And they just gobbled all that. So, there's a lot more concentration of ownership in the parcels out there. And they're just being very careful how they let that out. Other factors driving the values, there's a real labor shortage, increase of price of materials. And then, we were talking about this bidding war. A lot of it is driven by in-migration. We're seeing people coming in from California, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, and they will have sold their house there for $700,000, a small property. They'll come up here and they'll buy a house for $350,000. Someone might put it on the market for 300. They will just bid it right up to $350,000. They want the house, they've got that, and they still have, you know, $400,000 walking around money in them. So, this is one thing that's really adding a lot of pressure, too, is the in-migration that we've been looking at. All of this in context of income. Can we afford this? I was thinking the other day, I don't know how much longer I can afford my house. In change of median household income, this is in Ada County, the last 10 years has been 5%. Not per year, but 5% over that period of time. Last year, we saw a 3% increase, 2015 to 2016, and that's the most available. So, when we're looking at housing prices going up at 10%, and, hold on, because I've got even more news for you at the end of this, 10%, we're going to, next year, we're going to wish we had 10% increases, those who are paying taxes and whatnot. But again, 10% increase does not translate into a 10% increase in taxes. It might be a 4% increase in taxes or something like that, because as values go up, levies go down. Quickly, I'm just going to talk about commercial property, and we'll wrap this up. You have 2,400 parcels valued at $2.8 billion last year. It's a decrease of market value. That doesn't make sense, and it didn't to me either. So, I put my staff to work on that. It's what, the big impact on this was the LDS temple. We assessed that last year, and the Board of Equalization took that off, saying it was exempt as of January 1. So, we saw $38 million of new, of commercial property, and new construction just go away. And I mentioned the new construction. That's, I'll just get a little bit ahead of myself if I may. There was a bill passed in the legislature this year. The temple, it is work that was in process, we call them partial assessments. We'll say if Walmart was building a new store, and it was worth $1 million January 1, it wasn't finished, we would put an assessment of $1 million on. That's a partial assessment. And we did that with the LDS church. And we did that with the LDS church last year. Because it was not exempt, it wouldn't become exempt until it actually was doing the religious functions. Well, this legislation this year is what it is. If there is any property that potentially could be exempt, oh, and by the way, that $38 million would have gone in to your, your new construction role. And you could have used that to increase your budget capacity by $38 million. But with this new law, if it, like this LDS church, well, is there any other church or any other exempt property? The school, for example. If it's going to be exempt, they can apply for a provisional exemption. And then that value of that Walmart, well, so that was going to be a church million dollars. They would get a provisional exemption. And that million dollars would not go on the roll. And it would not go into new construction at all. And then once it was completed, they would then apply for an exemption. And if they received it, then it would just go on. And in a way, I think this is a good piece of legislation. I believe Representative Moore was behind this. And I really thought it was good because what was going on, budgets were going up, both sides had $38 million. But yet then it was taken off. But there wasn't an additional value, a tax applied by that $38 million. It was being pushed off onto the homeowners exemption and commercial properties owners and everybody else. I think it was just really a good piece of legislation. But anyway, that explains why there was a decrease in the real property. Median change on commercials, 3%. Personal property is 206 million. That's the first time we've exceeded the amount that was there before. The personal property exemption went into effect in 2013. Total market value, not taxable value of commercial is 2 billion, 945 million. Last year, it was 2 billion, 952 million. So it's virtually, there's no change. It's just a quarter of a percent. And I'm just going to quickly wrap this up with your new construction again. This is important because that's where you can increase your budget capacity, is the amount of new construction. Amount of new construction here in Meridian is $464 million. That's about a 14% increase. 234 million is because of residential. 108 million is because of commercial. And then there's a piece called new subs, change of status. A new sub, if there's new land that's been subdivided, it's been increased in value because of the subdivision or if it's been rezoned. That is an increase in value, and that's 113 million. I'm just going to, before I end, I want to talk about urban renewal. $212 million, that's 50% compared to last year's 141 million. The Meridian urban renewal is 164, 10 miles, 48 million. That's up 850% over the 5 million the year before. So that's just really taking off. Tax burden has not changed. Your residential property is still paying 65%, commercials 35%. And I'm just going to just close with just a couple of comments. 2007, as we all know, was just an extremely strong year. Meridian has just really been growing. There's a large demand for new homes and, which is causing prices to appreciate out here. We're seeing above-normal price appreciation. Normal price appreciation in residential properties, about 4% a year. We saw over 10% for 17. Looking at February and March MLS data, over 20% for January, or for February increase, February of 17 to 18. I thought that would just be a spike. I expected it to go down. March came in at over 20%. So who knows what we're going to be looking at for this next year? The last time we saw values like this increasing preceded by about, you know, 18 months before a collapse. I don't, I'm not saying this market's going to collapse. I don't think the market is, everything is so different. There's not a lot of speculative buying. People are paying cash. And people are living in these properties. They're not buying a house for 175,000 to flip it a few months later for 225,000. It's a very different market. Lending is very different. So I don't mean to say there's a crash, but it's, the market is just, I don't know how long we can sustain that. I'm just going to end up, the Ada County population is 457,000. That's increased about 13,000, a 3% increase. 3%, it's not a big number. But when you consider that 3%, values are going to be doubling every 23 years. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's what I've got to say. I didn't mean to take nearly this much time, but I felt certain things really needed to be explained. It was, it was important for us to know all of that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Burns.
I don't have a question, just a comment. You know, you listen to these numbers and like your mind is blown to a certain degree. But in another aspect, it just goes to show, you know, and I get asked this almost on a daily basis about the growth of Meridian. And I think it's a true testament of what type of city we are. And we must be doing things right or we wouldn't be experiencing the type of growth that we're doing. So I guess going forward, it's just so important that we, you know, manage this growth in a smart way in order to keep the identity that Meridian has had for decades. So, preceding the numbers, those are, those are some pretty eye-opening numbers. And I will say that I'm somewhat affiliated with the construction business. And I would agree with you that the, the market is strong. And so hopefully it stays strong for, and I mean by strong, healthy in the sense that, you know, we're not dealing with fake investments or faux-investments. That we're dealing with strong investments that will benefit our community for, you know, many years to come.
If I could just make one quick follow-up comment. To me, this is the real challenge that you face, is this big in-migration and how are you going to manage it and let Meridian stay what people just love about this community? I'm glad I'm here and not over there.
Thank you so much for coming.
So good to see you. Good night.
Nice to see you. We will move into action items. 10A is a public hearing for H 2018-0038. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, there we go. Sorry about that. So item 10A, it's my understanding that the application or the...
The site was not posted.
Correct. So I believe this is being continued.
Okay. I will need a motion now that the public hearing has been opened to continue this item to May 15th.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move, we continue item 10A to May 15th.
Second.
Oh, a motion second to continue item 10A to May 15th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. That was a short staff report. Darn it. I thought we'd catch on. Yeah, and I would like to welcome and just give a call out to our Boy Scout in the audience. Thank you for joining us. We always love to see one of our scouts out there. So good luck with your badge there. Okay, item 11A under Department Reports is our Parks and Recreation Department. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about a project that we've been working on really for about the past year. And that is to provide a shade structure for the front of the band shell at Kleiner Park. Just to get you orientated, so it's fresh in your mind, that's the band shell. When the park was designed, it was, the band shell was positioned so it would transmit sound away from the surrounding neighborhoods. But as a result of that, it faces due west. So in the summertime, late afternoon, early evening, it just, it just bakes in there. There is a berm kind of to the west that helps a little bit in the, in the later, like dusk, 8 o'clock hour, but for the most part, it just kind of bakes. So what we've been working on for the past year is to solve this problem. We've, we've come up with a design that has two shade cloth cloths that can be taken down in the wintertime, put back up in the summer when it's hot. You know, maybe about June 1st. So at this time of year, you'd want to leave them off. The sunshine's pretty enjoyable. And when it starts to get hot, you'd put those up and, and provide that coverage. So there's four posts out in front. And then everything connects to one common post in the back that's actually at the very back of the stage. The next slide kind of gives you an overhead view of what, what that might look at. The other thing with a design like this, you need to engineer it for wind loading, but there's no snow load requirement. So constructability is a little easier in that regard. So it seems like a good solution for people out there. And it's high enough so when you're sitting on the berm that we added trees to for comfort of the spectators last year, you know, you can see underneath the front of it and there's no obstructed views. So what we've, you know, how, how this whole thing got started, shade has been a top priority with our, with our citizens, with our surveys and our Parks and Rec Commission. We've, we've had feedback from users from the band shell. They've, we've heard, you know, comments, it's just brutally hot. It's, it's hot on some of the, the Meridian sympathy, sympathy was out there. And they were concerned that the sun was, was baking their instrument that was so hot. So, you know, none of that's real good. So we started the design process with Johnson Architects and took a couple of different versions to the Parks and Rec Commission. We had one that was three triangular sails. It might have been a little easier to construct and they really didn't like that. It didn't provide complete coverage over the area. So we kind of stuck with the design that you saw here. And during the process, we got pricing from a contractor that's installed shade sails and picnic shelters from us in the past. And so kind of a basis for some of the numbers that we came up with. And so just to kind of truth out some of the, you know, is this going to provide the coverage that we want? We, we put together this shadow study and you can see how the time of day and the shading that, that goes across. And the, it gets pretty well, pretty well covered until about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. And then at that point, the trees start to take over and do a good job with some of that comfort in there. So we wanted to truth that and just see that, you know, hey, is it really going to, is it really going to work as intended? So what we are here tonight is to get your feedback. You know, is this a worthwhile project? Is the design appropriate? If it is, what we'd like to do is we'd like to go through the budget process with a enhancement for fiscal year 19 of $90,000. We currently have $51,000 in the budget for shade at Kleiner. It's a combination of both last year's budget enhancement for $32,000 that, when it was presented, it was to help fund something for the front of the band shell. So we want to put that towards the solution. And then another $19,000 from the, the tree plantings that I mentioned on the berm. So together, we have $51,000 saved up. We'd like to put another 90 towards it. And we appreciate any questions or any feedback that you might have. Is it worthwhile? Should we keep going or stop right here or change what we're doing? And I'll pause.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mike, thanks for going to the work to figure it out and finding out what would be the best option. However, 141,000 for something that appears to be mostly useless from 4:30 to 6:30, I think would not be a wise use of public's money.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
Mike, so is that $141,000 just for those sails? The construction of that?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylan, it is. And it's for the shade sails. It's for the, the posts and the footings that need to go in. Something that size has a really substantial footing and, and all the grounding. The other thing that makes it a little bit difficult is that common post in the back and just getting in there to work. So yeah, that's, that's the, the cost of what you saw here would, would be $141,000.
That just seems so high.
It is. And so part of, we do, it does. And we've, we've struggled with this as well is that you see shade cloths that are attached to buildings and stuff at restaurants. And you think, yeah, that's pretty easy. But we need to engineer things to the 2015 International Building Code that these shade sails like this need to, need to withstand 120 mile an hour wind load. No snow load, but wind load. And we've even argued and said, you know, at 70 miles an hour, the fabric's gone and all you have is a flagpole, but it doesn't matter. The code is what it is.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Mike, thank you so much. I know this has been an ongoing project and a lot of ideas have been looked at that have not met it. And I've been up on that stage when it's been exceedingly hot. So I definitely think that it is a worthwhile project. That band shell is used so much. It's such a great asset for what we have. My question for you is the material, has it been like approved or tested for musical performances? Is this going to change the sound, any?
Yeah, great question. We, we're not sure. A lot of the sound that's in there is amplified, so it wouldn't matter with that. Some of the other stuff, we're not sure. I don't know how well the band shell itself is acoustically designed to begin with. So, you know, we had that discussion and kind of what we came up with is, it's, shade is better than no shade because if you don't have the shade, a lot of people just don't want to play there.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burns.
Mike, thank you for your presentation. One question, how much for just, you know, for future purposes, the replacement of the, of the actual shade?
Great, great question. So the fabric itself has a lifespan of about 10 to 15 years. It depends on how long you leave it up. So I would anticipate putting it up around June 1st and taking it down first part of September. So we would be on the 15-year span. And both of those, those fabric pieces would be about $8,000 to $10,000 to replace. And that would be every, approximately 15 years.
Okay. Additional questions, comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, my apologies for being late, but I was able to watch Mike's presentation via YouTube or listen to it in my car on the way in. One question that I didn't hear that I'm hoping maybe you can provide for us is, we're talking about a four-month period. And I know that there's only certain events that would fall kind of within the bubble of time of when the shade would really be beneficial. How many events a year are we talking about?
Yeah. So that, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great, great question. And that's something, so when the park first opened in, in 2012, we had 24 total band shell reservations. In 2015, you know, kind of fast forward, it's been gaining. So 2015, there were 64. In 2016, there were 60. And last year, there was 57. So we're right about 60 a year. If you, if you figure that each time block is $150, you know, either for the morning or the afternoon, and then you could rent it for $300 a day, you could figure that, and some of these reservations were non-paid, where some of our summer camps would, or schools would have a musical performance because of our fee waiver, we're not going to charge them for it. So I figured 30 paid reservations at $150 bucks, we're, we're bringing in $4,500 a year-ish. I, I was going to try to get really accurate numbers, but because we switched our software, it, all that's gone. But it gives you a good idea.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
And Mike, I appreciate you kind of trying to take the financial mindset... And, Mike, I appreciate you kind of trying to take the financial mindset into consideration, and I think we all know that if something council is going to move forward on, we're not, there's no window of time which will ever recoup the investment back on doing something like this. Thirty-five years. Thank you, Councilman Mylan. I think my, my focus has been more about how many events are we positively impacting. And I know that there are lots of events that happen in the morning, and you talked, I think, in your presentation about there's a point in time where the, the trees start to provide the shade. And so for me, what I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around is, of those, let's say sixty events a year, how many are going to fall within the window of time that the shade structure is really going to benefit them? Is it just the Meridian Symphonies events? Is it Gene Kleiner days? Is it one or two additional events? To me, that, and I, we don't need an answer for that tonight, but I think that if this were to move forward in the budget process, to me, that's a really important piece, is how many events really is this large of investment going to impact?
Yeah. And, and just as, just as, kind of off the top of my head, more than half, because most of the concerts are in the afternoon and evening. The morning time block, where it would still be somewhat shaded and cool, we've had some church services out there. Those, it wouldn't impact that, for sure. But for the most part, it's June, July, and August, and it's in the afternoon. So, seventy-five percent would be, that'd be a good educated guess.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, the, as to the, for me, as to the first question, it's clearly, in my mind, a worthwhile project, the shade issue in all of our parks, but here in particular, there's been a hot topic and high on the priority list to make sure we can address. Whether the design is appropriate, I don't know if there's other less costly options. I don't know if I can provide any input to assist with that question, because I don't know what to compare it to. But, so, it's a, definitely a worthy project. One of the challenges is trying to address these in a one-off way. We sort of had that with Home Court, as opposed to, you know, reviewing it in conjunction with all the enhancements in the entire budget next month.
Sure.
So, it's kind of difficult to make a definitive up and down right now, but-
And, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, and that's really why we're here. I mean, we, we want to know is just, are we just, you know, no? Is it, you know, stop right here, or go forward with a budget enhancement? At least we've socialized it with the council, and we know the, you know, kind of the design and the costs and the purpose, and, you know, some time to think about it. And if there are any, any additional data or questions that you might have, we can bring back. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. I, I don't think it was put here for an action item, just for your information. I, I know it's been a priority for some time, as Ms. Little Roberts had mentioned. The first phase of shade has been done, and that was for the audience piece with the, the planting of the trees. This one was just a lot more complicated, because any shade is more intrusive to covering the performers. That was the biggest challenge, and why you, you have something a little bit more elaborate. So, I, I guess, I think council needs to see this compared to all the other priorities and, and to, because it is the number-one priority for the Parks Commission, you need to include it in that process.
Perfect.
Counsel, if there's any questions that you think of between now and budget, please let the Parks Department know, and they can build that into their presentation. And any further questions, comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Not, not a question. I just, Mike, I appreciate you coming before us and at least asking our feedback. And I know that it's easy to sit here and say, "Oh, it's waiting to see till the budget," and I, and I'm completely open to that. But, as I think you heard from some of the comments before I was here, this is a very expensive request, and I am struggling to see the total benefit related to the cost. So, it's one that I personally, without seeing substantially more data to justify why we should have it, that's not something that I am completely in support of at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven B is under the Mayor's Office with an update on, on the post office discussion.
Madam Mayor, City Council, in your packet, you had a memo that I put together for you, just to kind of outline the steps that have been, that have taken place over the last couple of months in regards to reaching out and to see if another post office location will ever be warranted by the Postal Service in Meridian. This is obviously something that we have limited capabilities in influencing, but that being said, we, we have reached out to Commerce and Labradore's Office, who provided us the framework of the steps that, in theory, the Postal Service is taking. It, it was not what I would call a robust document with an application and other components, but at least outlines the process, which we know is the ZIP Code Boundary Review Process. We have been in communication with the local postmaster, our planning department, to try to get them the information that they may need, and that information will eventually be sent on to the regional postmaster for consideration. I, I think just some of the things to note that wasn't included, but for your information, is in two thousand and six, when we last got a postal ZIP Code adjustment here in the community, we had about sixty-two thousand people. So, at that time, if you do the math, it's not one-hundred percent, but if you divide it in half, that would have been about thirty thousand people per ZIP Code. Boise has six post offices. They've got about two-hundred-and-forty thousand people. So, you can start seeing some numbers in that thirty to forty thousand person range. I would imagine that even if the post office wasn't looking at a new facility, they would soon be looking at a, they would have to be looking at considering an additional ZIP Code here in our area, which would likely also, I'd have to think, they'd have to think about a facility at that point in time. So, I think the time is right to engage in this process. We will be submitting that information as appropriate, and we'll also be working with the congressional delegation staff to see what, if any, advice they may have through that process for us. So, with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
First, first comment, Robert, thanks for the memo. I, I think that was really well thought out, and at least gave me some context about what our discussion was going to be tonight. I appreciate that. Did staff of, of our delegation give you, I mean, it's not something that I think that they have probably ever worked on before, but how this process will play out, when we will be informed about when, if anything's going to happen, and ultimately, if the question is going to be answered?
Madam Mayor, Council, Councilman Kavner. So, the only conversation we've had with any delegation staff at this point is, they reach out to CRS to provide a document that showed the process. I, I'm not aware that any of them, we, we have engaged in the past on this with our delegation. It's been many, many years. But, no. The, the short answer is no. I mean, even if and how and what the process, once it's, when will it be sent to the regional postmaster? When will, will it have the adequate information? There's a lot of those questions. So, I, I think it's, you know, the intention is to have a conversation made with delegation staff, and hopefully get them to engage on our behalf at the appropriate time, if necessary.
We, we have talked to our delegation in the past. This is the first time I've heard it ever associated with a ZIP Code, which was a surprise. I know the postmaster is asked a number of times. It's not a new topic, but it seems to be one that just never lands anywhere. So, we, we hope we found maybe the mechanism for doing that, if, if it is a ZIP Code, that it, it at least is starting another discussion.
And, Madam Mayor, Council, if I can elaborate on some of the information that was also from the two thousand and eight issue, just so people understand what was being requested at that time. The postal, at that time, the post office was only looking at building a postal annex, not a facility for customers. So, it was basically to expand their back-office operations, is what they were looking to do. It would have allowed for more space at the existing location, potentially, potentially, for post office boxes and some of those, if they would have been able to move their, some of their operations many years ago. But it would not have provided another facility for customers to go to in the community at that point in time. And I think that's ultimately the, the question that we are looking for is a place for, so everyone doesn't have to drive to one location, because roads matter, you know, when facilities are in that location, just so, for that. But council considered the application at that time, and for land use reasons, decided not to support their application.
And, and following that, the, the next, I guess, strategy in dealing with the ongoing growth was to work with the private sector in providing post office box locations, and, and then they also did an expansion in their current location. The postmaster did tell me that they've had numerous assessments to, to, because before, a, a new post office can be considered, they have to have totally maximized all their space. They feel, of course, that they have, but there is a checklist review, and there were, I think, three additional areas that the assessor determined they hadn't exceeded capacity. And so, they believe they may be closing those, on those three areas. So, I, I think that all of the indicators with the ZIP Codes, as, as Robert described, and what the postmaster's been doing on their current facility utilization is leading towards maybe a new facility. I, I don't know, but we're, we're, we're going to be definitely a, a part of the conversation. I know Brian in our community development has been working with the postmaster and providing additional number information that can help strengthen their arguments as well. Any follow-up questions, comments? Certainly, we'll, we'll keep you in the loop as we hear anything.
Thank you.
Under item twelve, anything for this? Oh, I have some events. Kleiner Memorial Plaza Dedication is not on May second tomorrow at four o'clock in Kleiner Park. City 101, May third, from nine to noon, and that's focused on Parks and Police. The Association of Idaho City's three-A district meeting is on Friday from eleven to one at the AIC meeting, or AIC office. As you heard from MYAC, the Point of Hope Suicide Prevention Run, which you were all signed up for, on Saturday, May eleventh, begins at eleven-fifteen. That's the running part. So, we hope that's the part you show up for. And the Town Hall meeting is next Wednesday, May ninth, at six-thirty at St. Ignatius School.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Since I made every motion so far today, look like you were about to move us into thirteen.
Yes.
I move we go into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four-two-zero-six-one-D, J, and seventy-four-two-zero-six-A, one, A, and B.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call her all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Mylan?
Aye.
Councilman Byrd?
Aye.
Councilman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilman Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilman Kavner?
Aye.
Councilman Borton?
Aye.